We have a few cards. And I will call your name and you can line up. At the desk, you'll have a minute to speak. We have Ruth Sarnoff, Antonio Ramirez, Eric Ates, Deborah Lack, Kwasi Nkrumah, and Emma Cortez.
We get two minutes at the police station. Why don't we get a minute here? This is supposed to be the voice of the city. The people are supposed to speak. Give us two minutes.
All right. Cannot disrupt the meeting. Mr. Clerk, what's the word on the amount of time?
Right now, we have one minute, but it's at your discretion.
Okay. So since we have a limited amount of speakers, we'll go for two minutes, but you guys got to roll. Come on, Ms. Sarnoff, we got to start.
Oh, Ruth Sarnoff. I talked with you, some of you, a little earlier at council meeting. I wish more of the members of the council would come to this committee because this is an important committee and it's an opportunity to hear perhaps people in a little more in-depth and with less disruption and confusion. I want to stress that the most important resource you have as a council, as a homeless and poverty committee, is the people who have worked hard and who have been putting their life on the line, so to speak, for these issues for a long time. It didn't happen overnight. I have to, I will reserve the remarks on item one for a later time, but I do believe that the spirit should be, and who can we include and make part of this discussion, not who we can exclude. And I think to the extent that you find some forms, and I think there's some forms out there that could allow for more general give and take in a different kind of environment. And the idea of a czar is pretty crazy if you stop thinking about what a czar does.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I just gave pathways to home shelter to Sergeant of Arms, Marco Duarte, LAPD officer. And I stayed here as a homeless individual, law-abiding. I don't do drugs. I'm not a mental. I'm not a gang banger and I'm not a went-back. So I came, I ended up being homeless because you all know I'm a victim of crime and a victim of gang stalking. Ladies and gentlemen, I stayed at the Pathway to Home Shelter, Volunteers of America, at 3804A Broadway Place, Los Angeles, California, 90037. I didn't like it. It was full of bedbugs. I took my Lysol to spray it all down. They took my Lysol away. Too many fights, too many fights, loud and loud, night and day. I decided I'd rather be on the street. Why? Because at least there's less chances of hearing that toxic noise all night long. So I am homeless. I wish to God I was never a victim of crime or gang stalking. I would love to have my home again, have a cup of coffee, read the Wall Street Journal, and see the great El Jefe, Donald Trump, as the President of the United States of America. That's all I want. And yet unfortunately, I stepped on political toes and they are after me 24/7. I get harassed, attacked, vandalized, assaulted, robbed everywhere I go, 24/7. I'm not paranoid, I'm not a mental. But this follows me everywhere I go. Yeah, I'm angry. Yeah, I'm pissed. Yeah, I'd like a nap on up their asses. But I don't know who I stepped on. But when I do find out, I'm going to make sure I crucify them till the end of time. Alive or dead, I'm going to find out who it is. We are victims of crime, a segment of the population that is homeless, that wants to be housed in a place that is safe, secure, and protected and free from gang stalkers. If I had the money, I would do that. Open up a place for victims.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Deborah Leek. I'm from LA Can and from the Union Rescue Mission. I would just like to say that, you know, I come from a small town in New Jersey. And where I come from, we don't have a lot of homelessness, but I've been here five years. And it really breaks my heart when I have to walk down the street and I see a man who's crying his eyes out because he just got done having somebody rip him off for everything he owns. And I've been in the mission and I've saw a lot of people and I'm down here between 4th and 3rd here. And I see a lot of people that are getting singled out over others. And I've seen a lady just the other day, she was only, she was there for two months. And this poor lady could not speak no English. She didn't know what to do. She was crying, she was scared. And they gave her five minutes to get all of her belongings. And I don't know what happened to her and I fear for her. And I would just like to know what, you know, why we can't have our, you get some heart. We need heart back, you know, we really need it really bad. We need to do something about this because it's really sad, you know, it's sad to see people that you can't do anything for. And there shouldn't be no reason for. We've got, you know, you all have homes and everything, you know, and we all don't. We have to live in a place where they raise your rent from like $50 to $280. And it's all ridden with bugs and everything and it's like, it doesn't make no sense. And I'm, it's my first time speaking, so anyway, anyway, I just, I just hope, you know, that you guys can really stop and think about this tonight when you go to bed, okay? Because it could be you someday, you never know.
Good job, thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Emma Cortez.
Good afternoon, my name is Emma Cortez.
Y estoy aquí por la vivienda pública para que no la privatisen y que haga más viviendas para la gente desamparada.
I'm here because I believe that we don't, we need to not privatize public housing and to create more housing for homeless people.
Ya que me pesa mucho que una amiga de mi hija acaba de suicidarse por falta de vivienda.
It's been very heavy for me that a friend of my daughter's just committed, recently committed suicide because she was homeless.
Y así de que les pido por favor que nos tomen en cuenta porque somos pobres y para todas las razas en general no importa, morenos, chinos, mexicanos, americanos, todos, todos necesitamos una oportunidad.
And I'm asking you to please hear my petition on behalf of poor people. Doesn't matter what race you are, African-American, Chinese, Caucasian, we all need housing.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Eric Ates. And I'm here representing the 130 organizations and civic leaders who recently submitted an open letter to members of city council and Mayor Garcetti regarding the homeless state of emergency. Last summer, members of this committee along with other members of city council passed a pretty egregiously immoral and potentially illegal law in 5611. We were somewhat hopeful back in August at a recent hearing when folks had seemed to be walking it back, right? We had seen people trying to decriminalize sort of that, realizing that across the city, communities, organizations, leaders, in fact, the federal government is calling for other approaches, approaches that do not criminalize and punish people for being poor. So we understand that amendments came out of this committee and are going to full council on Tuesday. We want to make sure it's clear to all of you that we cannot make a law like 5611 any less bad than it already is. We understand that it is promising that folks are trying to emphasize the decriminalizing aspect of it. But it's our understanding that even when it returns to full council on Tuesday, it is not going to go far enough. And we wanted to say that things have changed since August. We were promised, we were somewhat, it was somewhat promising in August to see members of this committee trying to work on aspects of homelessness policy that don't criminalize. But since then, we've had the state of emergency announced. We have members like Councilmember Weezer say things like, "We're not going to arrest our way out of this problem." We have other members of this committee saying things like, "We need other approaches." Council President Weston saying, "We need other approaches." We've had the federal government come out and say that they're going to examine how cities are approaching homelessness and if they're criminalizing folks, impact how they're going to allot funds. That should be a call to action for all of us, that we shouldn't, we should repeal 5611. We can't make it less bad. We can't make it so some folks are criminalized in some parts and depending on, the only way to decriminalize it, the only way to move forward is to stop 5611, to repeal 5611, and create policies that emphasize permanent supportive housing.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Kwasi Nkrumah. I'm the co-chair of the Martin Luther King Coalition of Greater Los Angeles and also the president of the Yacko Park Neighborhood Council. If we have a homeless crisis in our community and we all know that we do, then we need to really start acting like it. First of all, as far as appointing a czar, why would we spend a high salary for a position like that?
So you got to save that for item one. You can't speak on item two.
Excuse me, I'll move on. In a very basic way, I was down here about two months ago when the council was discussing the 350 bill that was going before the state senate and the oil trains coming through Los Angeles. And while I was at that meeting, there was a long roster of city-owned properties which the city was getting rid of. If the city has an inventory of vacant properties, I mean, there are many programs that have been shut down in many areas of our city. Recreation centers, community health centers, even swimming pools have been shut down. A lot of these facilities could readily be converted right away to house homeless people. Many of them already have many of the facilities such as showers, bathrooms, et cetera, and they might need a little fixing up. But if we're talking about spending $100 million a year on tackling homelessness, it would seem to me that that would be a very good place to start, especially as someone mentioned in the council session earlier, with El Nino coming this way very soon. So we would like to urge that this committee and the city council go through that roster of city-owned properties and start looking at what could be immediately converted for use and housing for the homeless and put a moratorium on the sale of those properties to private interests. Thank you.
Thank you. And Diana Zuniga will conclude our general public comment.
Hi, my name is Diana Zuniga. I'm with Californians United for a Responsible Budget. We're a statewide coalition of over 70 organizations working to curb prison and jail spending, reduce the amount of people inside of prisons and jails, and redirect the savings into restoring the social safety net, permanent housing, supportive housing, all of the things that we know our communities actually thrive on. I'm here in solidarity with our members, LA Can, and really asking you all to prioritize permanent and supportive housing for the Los Angeles community. Right now, we're fighting a $2 billion jail plan at the county level. I know you all don't make that decision, but you do make a decision right now to prioritize supportive housing for folks that are being criminalized right now. So I'm asking you to take a step in the right direction, to take a step in a different direction away from criminalization and incarceration and towards supporting our communities that have been marginalized for a long time. I hope that you're hearing our call and I stand with LA Can and will continue to voice our concerns here. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete White.
So it's been 50 days since the city called a state of emergency. A state of emergency which we now know legally the city could not call. It's been 50 days since we declared a number, $100 million, to be pointed towards solving the homeless crisis. We've said from the beginning, there's $100 million that's being spent today erroneously, 87 million of which is going to arrest homeless people. We have three very clear demands. The first demand is that we, you, create a real pipeline to $100 million, starting first with going to the police department and stripping their budget. Second, stop all quality-of-life enforcement in the city of Los Angeles, which is tied to number one. Because if you stop all quality-of-life enforcement, we can place those savings directly into permanent supportive housing, the only thing that works. And number three, we're saying we want today, right now, if it's a state of emergency, if it's a crisis, we want to model what's happening in San Francisco. We want mobile showers, we want mobile restrooms. We want things to act as if Katrina rolled through here, to act as if El Nino is coming today. We don't want political rhetoric. We don't want 51 days, 52 days, 53 days. We're organizing, we're organizing to respond today. And in my last 25 seconds, I'm going to say the plight of homelessness in Los Angeles is racialized. One in 22 African-American men are homeless. One in 44 African-American women are homeless. That's compared to one in 254 all other ethnicities and gender. If Black Lives Matter, and we believe they do, we urge you to do something now.
Excellent, thank you to the folks that came and offered public comment to us. Today, our committee will be reviewing options for city governance as it relates to implementing the forthcoming strategic plan as well as LOSA's governance structure and how to best integrate our plan within their commission and their policy routine. A few months back, Mr. Weezer put forward a motion speaking to this matter. I'll ask him, before we hear our presentations, to just talk to us a second about the motion, to have a homeless coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Co-Chair. And the impetus for putting forward this motion was simply that when we looked around and wanted to see how the city could best address the issues of homelessness, there was really no repository of information or any institutional knowledge or any coordination as to the policy direction of the city. The policy direction of the city has been for several years more of reactionary to our litigation and to different court-ordered mandates that may or may not make sense. And so we started thinking that in order to start creating a policy direction, that we needed someone within the city who could manage the discussions internally within the different departments with the council, with the mayor's office, and to set us on a course that could set proactive policy on how we handle homelessness. On top of that, we recognize that there is very little coordination with outside agencies from the city. For example, at the county level, sometimes it is a council member who calls over there and tries to figure out how do we work together. Sometimes it's the mayor's office, sometimes it's the departments. But there's really no real coordinated effort as to how and who can outside agencies deal with within the city to address homelessness. And looking at this, we recognize that we needed to create some institutional knowledge, some point person, some point department, whatever it may be, for us to move forward on this. We put in a motion and asked for a homeless czar, whatever you call it, we think it's important for us to have that point person and to move ahead. Since the motion was introduced, our mayor appointed a homeless coordinator, which is a very good start. And Greg Spiegel has done a great job of help in helping to hide the issues of homelessness and address the issues of homelessness through the mayor's office. But whether this mayor who cares deeply about homelessness is there in the future, we don't know. Whether another mayor decides to appoint a homeless coordinator or not, that may or may not be the case. So we need somebody within the bureaucracy, within the departments, that could be here and provide consistency throughout political change of leadership, whether it's at the council level or at the mayor's office. So that's how we came up with this idea. I want to thank the CLA for their work. I know several proposals have been forward and I look forward to the discussion to see what's the best way for us to move forward on this.
Excellent, thank you so much, Mr. Co-Chair. So we have from the C O's office Patty Huber and from the CLA's office John Wickman that are going to come and review their findings with regard to this matter. I would greatly appreciate you reading it into the record, Mr. Clerk.
Item number one is the motion from councilmembers Weezer and Bonin relative to a full-time coordinator, director, or czar within the city's organizational structure for coordinating activities to address homelessness, including the coordination of the Los Angeles Homelessness Services Authority, Los Angeles County, and other government agency. And for the record, the CLA has submitted a report that's available in the back desk.
I'm sorry, it was a joint report from CLA and C O, correct? Yes, thanks to both of you for the work you did on this.
Good afternoon, John Wickman with the Office of the Chief Legislative Analyst and Patty Huber with C O is here as well. And I'd actually like to invite Peter Lynn with LOSA up as well. The motion that Mr. Weezer and Mr. Bonin introduced started a conversation on a very specific issue related to the internal governance of how we're dealing with homeless issues. As we started to look at that, we saw that there are issues related to how the city relates to other agencies, as is noted in the motion, as well as to LOSA. And it turns out that LOSA's actually has relationships with other organizations outside and beyond that as well. And so there's this whole column of organizations that we're trying to coordinate here. LOSA's really uniquely situated kind of at the middle of all of this activity going on. And they have reporting requirements from the federal government as well as from the city and the county that they have to comply with. And so we're kind of having this conversation between our different organizations of how we really need to structure our governance here to be most effective. And so in the report you have in front of you, we begin talking about LOSA, their structure and their organization. And then we move into the changes that were implemented in federal law through the HART Act that are driving some changes in the governance at LOSA. So I think it would be helpful if we start with the work that they're doing there. And then we can move into the internal interdepartmental coordination issues and the conversation between the city and LOSA that follow up from that. So if you don't mind, can have Peter make some comments on the HART Act.
Peter, I just want you to know, I was going to give you your own stage, but you know, it worked, it all works.
Thank you. We just want to be collaborative with our partners here. Peter Lynn, Executive Director for LOSA, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on continuum of care governance and on the HART Act. I think there's a, there are a range of issues that sometimes get conflated and, you know, I want to try to unpack a little bit. The HART Act puts a set of requirements on each continuum of care to put together a governance structure that is responsive to certain kinds of requirements. And those requirements cover sectorial representation so that there is representative, representatives on that governing structure from the provider community, there are representatives from public administrative agencies, sectors like education, law enforcement, the business community, a variety of different folks that engage with and have aspects of responsibility for homelessness would be members of that governing structure. Would also include consumers, so there would be some homeless or formerly homeless representation on there. So there's a variety of sort of requirements from a sector responsibility. There's also a set of responsibilities with regard to specific tasks that a continuum has to have with regard to its relationship with HUD. So there needs to be a lead agency that's responsible for reporting to HUD. There has to be an HMIS agency. Those functions currently sit with LOSA and we have been engaged with them under the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement for quite a while. The continuum of care requirements under the HART Act are more expansive. They also speak to a sort of a process of engagement. So the way that the governance in that way is structured right now, the LOSA Commission forms that governance structure with the assistance of an advisory panel that's been put together called the Coordinating Council, which has sector representatives who are elected by the service planning areas and sit on a board. Largely, that board is representative of providers at this time, but it is, you know, the nominations and the participation are open to everybody. Recognizing the challenges of governance within Los Angeles, which is probably the most complex environment in the nation and certainly, you know, one of the largest continuums, but it's also, you know, because of the nature of the governance structure in Los Angeles with divided responsibilities between the city and the county, with 88 different cities in here, it's a uniquely complex environment. The LOSA Commission put together an ad hoc committee in the spring on COC governance and with the express function of looking at the way that our current advisory board is structured and coming up with a governance structure that is maybe more responsive to the needs of and probably more expansive, responsive to the needs of LA as a region. That board, unfortunately, the actions of that committee were interrupted by the fire that displaced LOSA. So we were, you know, we were delayed a little bit in getting that going. But it started, it started in October and it's met a couple of times. There are representatives from the LOSA Commission, there are representatives from the Coordinating Council, and there are also some outside representatives. So Phil Ansel is representing the county, Greg Spiegel from the mayor's office. We have representatives of other public administrative agencies including Hackla and the Sheriff's Department, covering, you know, a sort of a range of different folks. That committee structure is looking at governance from a broad basis, which is to say, what would it take to bring all of the strategic partners together into a common space where we can sit around a table with the city, the county, all, you know, councils of governments that represent all of the other cities, all of the major regional players, and actually, you know, align the strategies that we have and come together on, you know, policy and other kinds of commitments that need to be made. So that those can come back and recommend to the commission, to the city, to the county, an ongoing framework. That's the, you know, that's the task that's in front of the LOSA Commission Committee at this time. There is also, obviously, you know, within it there are very sort of narrow responsibilities that relate to things like the recent Supernova, where we have responsibilities for replying to HUD on its funding opportunities. So there are certain sort of technical responsibilities that would, that may, that may not be of interest to a large body like that where we may have a, you know, a subcommittee or we would have a, you know, an executive board that would deal with those kinds of things. But that's, one of the challenges facing as complex an environment as we have is getting the right table put together where there's representatives where, you know, from, from the correct sectors. I think that, you know, we have some examples that have been, that have been quite powerful from other cities. Many cities have taken this challenge on in various, you know, in a variety of different kinds of ways. We also have a local example from our partners at the United Way and the Home for Good Plan to End Homelessness. And their, their leadership group was put together with a variety of sectorial representatives. And I think that's a, you know, it's a, it's a powerful model of combined strategic alignment and collective impact. So we certainly have a responsibility of engagement with the city. We have a responsibility of engagement with the county. We are happy to work with a governance structure that was responsive to the needs of the city and ensuring that, you know, whatever the strategic plans that emerge from this process, that they have, you know, solid traction and good focus. Obviously, we will work closely with, you know, whatever entity comes out of that, of that, you know, policy formulation. So with that, with that work going on, you see, the LOSA has this, the Continuum of Care Board that will be developing with dozens of representatives across the spectrum who will be working, advising, developing policy, et cetera, et cetera. They have the LOSA Commission that oversees the work because actually the continuum of care is a portion of the work that's going on at LOSA. It's not the full amount of work that's going on there. The federal guidelines want to see that all of the programs related to homelessness are being, are connected and they all work together. But the LOSA Commission is dealing with more than just the continuum of care. So then coming down to the city, the next question is, what is the relationship between the city and LOSA? And as we described the JPA in the report, we found that there are no, no specific reporting requirements or relationship description related to the city and LOSA beyond an annual report from the CFO of LOSA as to how the LOSA budget is put together, which is very important, very helpful. But there may be other requirements that would be helpful. As Mr. Weezer noted at the beginning, we're in this for the long haul. This isn't about who's in place at any given time in any given position, whether that's a political position or an executive director of an office or a general manager of a department. It's about how we keep the program moving over time. And so having this governance discussion helps
And so having this governance discussion helps us put in place the structure so that we can make sure that information is coming to us on a regular basis. We have great support from LSA on the work that we're doing today. It's been incredible, the amount of data and information that's been coming forward. So I want to make it clear that this is not related to what we're seeing today. But as Mr. Weiser said, we want to make sure that the structure is set up for the long term. So one of the recommendations in our report is that you would instruct the CLA, CAO, and LSA and the Housing Department to sit down and review options related to this question of the relationship between LSA and the city, and whether there are GPA amendments that might be appropriate there to ensure that there's more reporting on metrics, or information, or sharing of information, those kinds of things, so that it's a little more structured in that area. And so then, moving on to the last set of issues, it's related to the interdepartmental coordination within the city. As the CAO report from earlier this year indicated, there are many city departments that are engaged with the homeless in one way or another. And there's not a great deal of coordination among the city departments. I mean, the motion that Mr. Weiser, Mr. Bonin put in is addressing that specifically, and that's why we're here. So what we did in our report was we looked at all of the different types of models for interdepartmental coordination in the city, and found a lot of them. There are a lot of different ways that we address these issues in the city. As Peter mentioned, it's not just at the county, within the city, we have distributed responsibilities and distributed roles. And so, time to time, getting all of those people together in the same place can be a challenge. So the city's developed a variety of ways to accomplish that. One, you know, from very informal, technical working groups, where, you know, staff-level people from a variety of departments sit down, discuss an issue, and move forward on identifying solutions and presenting those to the council, such as the census technical committees that were put together every 10 years. And those are just city staff-level departments, you know, getting together and finding a way to help with those issues. And then moving through the spectrum, all the way to a full department created in the charter, such as, you know, the Ratepayer Advocate, who is directed by the charter, and departments are responsible to report to the Ratepayer Advocate based on the information that he requests. So there are a lot of different ways that you can approach this question of interdepartmental coordination. And so it's really a question for you, from a policy standpoint, is what are the goals that you're trying to address? Is this more of a short-term solution, investigating the issues and trying to find solutions, and then it's done, such as the Burglar Alarm Task Force? Or is this a long-term solution, trying to find, to ensure that this is being addressed not just for the next year, the next two years, but the next five or 10 years? You're gonna have the comprehensive homeless strategy coming forward to you in a couple of months, and it's likely that there are going to be some long-term recommendations in there, that it's going to take a while to implement some of that. And so it's likely that you would want a governance structure internally that makes sure that you can see that through for the long term. Then we get into issues such as, how do you ensure accountability among departments? Again, individual departments are responsible to their general manager, to their budget, and the work program that they have set out in front of them. And so it might be difficult for one department to direct another department to get the work done. And so the idea is to find somebody in a position that can oversee and have the authority to get to responsiveness from all of the departments in their different roles and responsibilities. So at the end of the day, in looking at all of these different models, the CAO and the CLA felt that the most effective model here to present for you, to consider, is the Oversight Committee model, something that we've used for Municipal Facilities Committee, EERC, and the new CRA Bond Oversight Committee. There's just a variety of these, they've proven to be very effective in moving forward on the issues that are present in front of the council. Great deal of responsibility, departments are not gonna ignore a committee of the CAO, the CLA, and the mayor. And the, all of those agencies, all of those entities have direct reporting responsibility to you in one way or another, and can, will definitely bring the information forward for your consideration in a timely manner.
I would also add to what John said. We use these oversight committees in the ways that he said. We also have several that were set up as part of voter-approved bond initiatives. And what we have found them to be is just very effective problem-solving committees. The departments can bring issues to us, and you've got three departments who play different roles in the city, and we can each bring our strengths to solving the problems for those departments and between departments, including our proprietary departments when necessary. And they've just been very effective.
From a staffing level, that means that not only do you have the CLA, the CAO, and the mayor, but you have the staffs beneath them who are providing support to them, who can solve the issues that Patty just mentioned. So if a department brings forward an issue, we can assign the staff within our offices to immediately get onto that. And so that addresses this concern of adding new staff to be a focus on this issue. This is a way to get going immediately without bringing in new staff to do the work and the additional costs associated with it.
Thank you for your report. It raises a lot of options and covers a lot of ground. I think the kernel that we're trying to get to on this committee is responsibility to the city, and someone to help us carry out our full intention. And I think responsibility to coordinate seamlessly with the county. Seems like there are a terribly, terribly large amount of moving parts for it to be addressed by a committee. A folks, even, a committee may be good, but outside the context of a singular leader that would answer to this committee and the mayor and all the rest, seems a little bit shy of where we want to be. Almost every other serious endeavor of the city that we undertake has a singular leader. So police, fire, even transportation. We're a part of the Metropolitan Transportation Authority, but, you know, our transportation department isn't run by a committee, it's run by a general manager. So I'm still concerned that perhaps what we're trying to get at isn't being clearly articulated, or the seriousness with which we are approaching this isn't sort of realized. Because for me, to say, well, we want to save money on staff, well, that to me is what, is one of the things you do when you're not serious. And so, you know, I'll pitch it to the authors of the motion to comment as well, and Mr. Price after.
Thank you. And just let me, I have some questions as well, just on the report and the recommendation on the Oversight Committee, but just to say that I agree with your point of view on that, Mr. Co-Chair, because we want to treat homelessness in the city just like we would treat any other public policy issue that we have a responsibility for, such as transportation, such as law enforcement, such as our sanitation department. And that Oversight Committee role doesn't really give it, as Mr. Harris-Dawson mentioned, that urgency, that kind of how important this one issue is. And I know some people say that, you know, we should end homelessness, but I'm of the opinion that we're not gonna end homelessness. People come in and out of poverty, we're gonna consistently and constantly, for the long term, have an infrastructure in place to address this issue, just like we're gonna continue to address transportation and all these other issues. And so I'm in agreement with the co-chair's comments that the Oversight Committee just doesn't heighten this issue to that level of responsibility and importance that we should. And again, it leaves a question wide open, that if somebody asks, who's responsible? Who is accountable? Ultimately, yes, it's the mayor and the council, but within the city, you need that singular person, that one person that we could say it's, you know, Joe Schmo, who's responsible. A committee, you still, it doesn't give it that kind of accountability that we would like to see. I have more questions than that, but I'd like to open it up to my colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I should say, although I'm a second on the motion, I'm more of an agnostic on this question, I think, and I'm really open to what folks have to say and share. I'm far more interested in declaring the state of emergency and getting the $100 million allocated and spent and providing actual services. But this, to me, is an important issue that needs to be addressed. Where I jump off-board completely is the moment, if we start getting into this and we start saying we shouldn't be doing any of our plan development or our spending stuff until we have this person on board, then I'm not on board, because we need to keep moving with alacrity. This is an important issue, and I think you guys outlined some of the issues that council members were trying to address, but I think Mr. Harris-Dawson and Mr. Weiser articulated that there's other stuff that isn't addressed. The thing that I like about the Oversight Committee structure that you outlined is I do think that there are plenty of examples of where that has been effective in the city. But I'm not entirely sure that all of those examples speak to exactly the type of situation we're in. In so many of those examples where it's expenditure for a bond program, or something like that, that's something we have to do, that we sort of have a legal obligation to do. And so there's something sort of forcing the action on it. This is an issue where action has been lacking for way too long, and I think I'm with Mr. Weiser and Mr. Harris-Dawson, that the Oversight Committee by itself doesn't provide the force and the vigor and the sense of personal accountability and advocacy that an individual in charge brings. So that sort of argues against the Oversight example. However, I think as we think about doing this, you know, there's a real risk of creating someone who has responsibility but no actual accountability if we just give someone a title. You know, if you have someone who has no staff, then they really can't get anything done. And the Oversight Model does provide staffing resources. We can create czars in the city all the time, and, you know, the mayor's office has certainly created some on information technology, on sustainability, but absent the responsibility to direct the departments or get them to engage, it's more symbolic. So I think we probably need to figure out something that's more of a hybrid between the two things. I think there does need to be an individual, but there's gotta be something with built-in accountability and ability to direct resources, whether or not it's someone who's a coordinator who then convenes the type of group you're talking about, or something like that. But you have to be able to sort of address both things. I'll have some more questions later, but that's just sort of my opening thought on the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thanks for the work. I think it's an important backrounder, if you will, and you've presented some interesting options. I agree with my colleagues, I think we need to have some kind of a hybrid. I like the Oversight, but I think we gotta have somebody there, somebody to, again, just reaffirms the fact that we really want to be accountable, that we want to have a face on the direction. I really appreciate the collaboration that's possible between the CLA and the council and the mayor's office, and the other organizations that are involved. But I think we gotta find a way to make sure it is inclusive. I've gotten calls from a number of organizations, and they feel that they're kind of left out of that discussion. And, you know, they're on the ground, they're providing services, and so I think we need to, again, have a structure that's going to get everybody at the table, even if it's a gigantic table, get everybody at that table, so that we're all kind of on the same page. And then, you know, when actions are taken there, or recommended, or suggested, that there is an individual who's, you know, gonna have some real responsibilities for helping to manage that process, as opposed to, you know, a committee or an oversight process that, you know, that might not just have the same kind of punch. And so I think this is a good start. I think a hybrid kind of approach in this situation is gonna be more effective, or most effective, and I think that process, that collaborative process that is totally inclusive of all the groups, organizations involved, providing services, providing input, providing access, gotta be here.
Comments?
So I think Mr. Bonin hit on the key concern that we struggle with. So if you name a single coordinator, then what is their core authority and where do they sit? So they need something to back them up so that a department would be responsive to them. And if you, for example, put them in the Housing Department, and by the way, I should comment, the Housing Department is the current contract administrator for the relationship with LSA, and they do the fine job in maintaining that relationship and maintaining the coordination with LSA from one department. But the point is, the Department of Sanitation has their own priorities, their own responsibilities, their own budget, their own staffing, and they have a lot of people going at them to deal with certain issues. Same with the Bureau of Sanitation, same with the Library Department, same with all of the other departments. So at the end of the day, whether they will be able to be responsive to a coordinator who's placed in the Housing Department is a concern. They, you know, how, what, it's gonna be collaborative, and people are gonna wanna try and help, but the degree of the collaboration is gonna be dependent upon all the other priorities that are going on, and there's no direct responsible accountability to that one person if they're placed in that single department. So that's really where, if you have one person, what is their accountability, what is their authority, and how do they enforce that? And so that's, when we looked at all of the options, you know, again, you have a charter-created department where they have that authority, they have the force of law behind them to do that. But short of doing that and going through the work of creating something like that, it was the Oversight Committee that really created that area where, again, a department is not going to ignore the mayor, the CLA, and the CAO, and they will be held accountable in that venue. And that venue has a direct link to the council and the mayor to report back the outcomes that we have. So it may not be one person, one face, but it is a steady set of offices who are always here and always providing support. Again, as Mr. Bonin mentioned, a single personality can come and go. We've seen that with czars in the city of Los Angeles, we see that with the homeless coordinator in the city of New York right now. Same kind of issue where people will come and go. So trying to find a structure that's in place over the long term, that's how we hit on the Oversight Committee as being the model that makes the most sense at the current moment.
And I would note that, I'm sorry, I would note that not all of our Oversight Committees are enforced on us by, say, the voters. Our Municipal Facilities Committee is something that council established, because they saw the need for this Oversight to occur within the city for the management of municipal facilities projects and getting them through a process and problems solved on a monthly basis when they're running into snags. So it's not just an external imposition on these Oversight Committees. We have done it to ourselves in many instances, and it, as I said, is successful and it works. There is nothing like having to come to those three people once a month to report on your progress and what you've done and what problems you're facing to keep an issue moving forward and being resolved.
Mr. Bonin?
Yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you have something else to add, Mr. Wickham?
I guess the final point is really, the JPA was created specifically for LSA to be at that apex of the policy and the coordination of what we're doing in the big picture for homelessness. So we, again, need to keep in mind that we have, the primary agency for homelessness for the city is LSA. And that's part of the piece that we have going on here.
So let me take it out of the theory and ask a couple practical questions. Let's say this was the structure we went with, and let's Let's say this was the structure we went with, and let's say this is the structure we had over the past six months. Representatives from LA Can, a number of other organizations are concerned about the perceived criminalization of homelessness in Los Angeles. With a czar or a coordinator, there's someone who can call and convene a meeting with them, be the chief point person on that, and come back and propose changes to policy to the council. Under this system, where it's three or four or five different representatives in a committee, who plays that role?
I think it would be a collective effort, but generally, the chair would take that primary role. We've not designated a chair for this particular committee at this point. But it would also be a committee that is established by council, so that would, in effect, make it a Brown Act committee, so it would also be something open to the public at all times, so they would have the opportunity to provide their feedback and input through public comment, both general and on specific items. And both of our offices, and I know the mayor's office as well, we often respond to these people anyway with questions, concerns, and so it's something we do all the time.
Yeah, but that's not exactly what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, you know, who's going to go out and meet with 30 folks in a room in Skid Row and have a three-hour-long conversation?
Well, I guess the most recent example we have at the city level for that was the street vending process where there were multiple public hearings, public meetings on that subject matter. I know that when we had the Burglar Alarm Task Force, it was the same thing, where there were multiple conversations of that. Again, we have the continuum of care that's evolving now, where that is really being established by federal requirement as the central point for these kinds of conversations. So that's really the critical part that's being developed.
I know. What I'm trying to get at, though, is sort of the leadership aspect of this that I think some of my colleagues are hungry for. And you talked about, you know, having committee meetings and maybe a town hall meeting. On the sidewalk vending, I didn't see the same thing that I'm talking about here, where someone's having a three-hour meeting with LA Can, or someone is going out and visiting what Venice Community Housing Corporation is doing, or someone who considers it their sole and primary responsibility to go to Santa Barbara and investigate the Safe Parking Program, or go to New York City and investigate the Safe Haven Program, and come back and sort of say, "This is the cutting-edge idea that's working somewhere else." I just, I get the feeling, the more I think about it and think of particular examples, that there's a proactive element of coordination that the committee structure doesn't quite get to. And I'm open to being persuaded otherwise, that's why I'm asking.
Councilmember, I mean, the kinds of responsibilities that you're articulating are the kinds of responsibilities that LSA undertakes on behalf of the city and the county and the region, although the authority to sort of tell a city agency, another city agency what to do is not something that we have. So, I mean, undertaking a strategic policy investigation, undertaking an effort to investigate a thing or to advocate for a position like ensuring that we decriminalize laws directed at homelessness, which is a position that we have taken, you know, that is an area that we, you know, we see as our role and responsibility in both response to the requirements that you have for that kind of policy, but also from this county and from the region.
Let me ask it this way. A few years ago, when everybody was sort of adrift on homeless policy in LA County, United Way and the Chamber formed Home for Good, and they sort of filled a void. And whether you like what they're doing or you dislike what they're doing, they created an energy around Housing First and sort of led the way on developing coordinated entry. That was really from them initially. Who plays that sort of role if we have a coordinating committee of the mayor's office, CAO, and CLA? Like, who's the one thinking, "What is the next really big thing we need to be doing?"
Well, so I guess I'm struck by, you know, a little bit of a challenge with the two different things that you're articulating. One of the fantastic roles that United Way played is to have a regional approach, good solid partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, where they're looking at it not from the perspective of the city and ensuring the collaboration between specific city agencies, but looking at it from an umbrella perspective. We have worked very closely with United Way and the Chamber on Home for Good. We have worked very closely on the implementation and the strategy and the design behind the coordinated entry system, and we see that as LSA's responsibility to take a regional approach. Coordination within the city family is a different kind of matter, but I guess I think that you have an agency at your disposal that is responsive to what you're articulating. Now, I guess, you know, we certainly wouldn't want to see, you know, our strategic partners like United Way not in that, they're a key part of it. And that's part of the important question, is that there are many, many different entities, some of them county, some of them public, some of them private, that touch on this and that need to be in that, you know, in that strategic umbrella.
And I think within the city, again, one of the recommendations that we have in the report is to investigate in greater detail this relationship between the city and LSA and how we can enhance that. Because I think, Councilman, your point is on target. The city didn't have a central person who was asking LSA those questions in the depth that would have moved us further than we needed to sooner. So looking at the JPA in ways that we can work on that relationship, I think, enhance exactly this point. LSA is your department for homelessness in this model, and the Oversight Committee provides the bridge in that to make sure that the city departments, LSA can receive assistance from the city departments, the city policy and where we're trying to go can be communicated back to LSA.
So I have a question. So you just said LSA is our committee to deal with homelessness?
Effectively, the JPA set it up that LSA is our department for homelessness.
Except that, as I understand, LSA, it doesn't give direction to any city department. Is that the case?
Correct. That's the link that we're trying to address.
So all of our city assets that are dealing with homeless are outside, right at this moment, are outside the purview of LSA?
Correct.
That's one of the central challenges of homelessness, is that it does cut across multiple entities. And so, you know, the leadership in this space has to be a collaborative one. It has to be one that is, you know, a strategic collaboration between county agencies, between public and private entities, between the business. I mean, there are so many different facets to this, and the resource base sits in so many different individual agencies, some of which are, you know, have different, you know, they're city, like, for example, the City Housing Authority has a different set of relationships to municipal agencies than mayoral departments, the sanitation or police. Each of them has a piece of this. The, you know, the sort of overall guidance has to be a collaborative framework. The individual sort of authority to instruct a given city agency to fulfill their role under that framework is different. We don't have that. We would, you know, that is not a task function that's ever been assigned to us. It's also, it's not one that we would have over a variety of other entities as well, which are key to this. The strategic direction, I think, is going to have to be a collaborative framework. I think the accountability within, you know, city departments is a different kind of question.
Can you appreciate just a little bit from our point of view, and I'd love to have a free-flowing responses to this. So you can sit here, Peter, and speak on behalf of LSA to us, right?
Yes, sir.
We don't have anybody that can talk to LSA on behalf of the city.
So I, are you, so, so this, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
So it would be like, if we wanted to hear from LSA, we brought, you know, Reverend Lawson and Shane Goldsman and all the, and we had eight, or how many other people it is, sitting here as a committee, talking to us? That doesn't seem like an optimal way of doing business. It seems much more efficient to talk to you.
So I guess, if you're asking me whether it's, you know, there should be someone on the other side, I don't disagree with you. I guess the, you know, I'm not holding down a position one way or the other. I'm not advocating for any of the, any recommendations that are in the report, or I do feel like there is a coordination role that is very important within the city family, within the county family. Those are, you know, those are very, very important functions. We don't play that role, and, you know, I'm not sure that we ever sort of could, even if we wanted to.
And Mr. Lynn, right now, if you want to talk to the city in your role as the executive director for LSA, if you want to talk to somebody, a point person in the city to say, "Hey, there's this great new idea," or "The feds are coming up with all this money," who do you call in the city to say, "Let's get this rolling. Let's get the council on board, let's get the mayor on board, and let's move this"?
So there would be a number of different individuals that I would speak to. So I would speak to Greg Spiegel, I would talk to Miguel, I would talk to staff on your teams, those would be the key individuals. I would also reach out to some general managers.
And I think that's what we're trying to get at. We're trying to get at that one point person that you could call right away, and that person internally could move things in motion to get to that result that you want, and we currently don't have that right now. But as I was listening to this, Mr. Chair, it reminded me that it's not only about setting policy direction. For example, if we agree that we need decentralized services from certain areas of the city that we concentrate at homeless services, such as downtown Skid Row and Hollywood, Venice, that we start, got to start spreading them out. I think a coordinator or someone who's responsible would remind us that every policy decision we're making, for example, where are we allocating our resources, would remind us, "Wait a minute, this is going to Skid Row again, we, you know, and let's do this." There's no stopgap or anybody reminding us what our overall policy direction is. But not only on policy, but implementation of programs. I mean, my office right now is coordinating Operation Healthy Streets, which is out there doing cleanups in Skid Row, coordinating with the county, get the social service providers out there before those cleanups happen. Otherwise, there wouldn't be no one else to do that. But that shouldn't be the function of a political office. We are not implementers of programs and policies for the city, and it just occurred to me right now as I was listening to this, that this, we need a point person that not only would be a committee, but that, who would do that to, when we have our own homeless-specific programs that need to get implemented? And a committee, I was just thinking aloud to myself, right, that this probably wouldn't function that way. We need a point person to kind of say, "Hey, let's go do this," and that person wakes up every morning thinking about how are we going to implement these programs and deal with homelessness.
Mr. Sidi, I want to welcome you to the committee and give you an opportunity to engage in this discussion, should you see fit.
Thank you for that. I'm focused on listening right now on this question of governance and who reports to who, and this question of leadership and what our role is. So, thank you. I won't be shy, sir, trust me, I'm ready to weigh in, I will.
I want to make sure. Can you all drill down a little bit more on this committee idea in terms of its, and pardon me if some of this happened when I stepped to the side, but it's, would it be subject to the Brown Act? You know, would it have, what would it entail? Would it have its own staff? How, we're, drill down a little bit more on how you all are thinking about that.
Well, any body that is created by city council, by legislative action, is subject to the Brown Act, and that is how our other Oversight Committees operate when they're established by council. So they are Brown Act committees, they're agendized, they follow all of those same rules and do public comment and all of those kinds of things. The way that they have, the way they work currently, our office generally chairs all of them. I can't think of any that we don't of these Oversight Committees. That doesn't mean there aren't, I just can't think of them right now. And our office has staff, CLA's office has staff, mayor's office has staff, separate and apart from the people sitting at the table, who can work on different issues. I'm not going to say that my office or CLA wouldn't, I can't speak for the mayor's office as easily, would not need to request staff in order to support the committee. It is possible that we do, because the Brown Act requires postings of agendas, the creation of minutes, all of those kinds of things, and we both all have staff who are fully employed at this point. But we could get it up and running and starting with existing staff and assess how much we can absorb and how much we might need additional resources, depending on really the issues that came to the committee, how intensive they were, how much staff work was required to problem-solve and get departments to implement different programs and move forward on different issues. And that's kind of what we do with these committees today.
And you said that they're almost always chaired by the person from the...
Generally chaired by Miguel personally, and most of them have, and I'm his standard backup, so I often chair them as well, and then the CLA usually has one of their assistant CLAs who chair them, who sit on them, and then the mayor's office assigns the appropriate person.
Excellent. One more question from me, and then if there are no other questions from members, we'll move to public comment, and that's with regard to LSA. LSA is one of the more intriguing entities that I've learned about since being on city council, kind of like MTA, but not, and...
We could use that level of funding.
Yeah, right. And actual authority, I think, probably, too. But what is the city council's participation on the LSA, on that commission? How do we, how does the city council participate in that?
So the JPA spells out that the mayor appoints the five seats to the commission and that they are confirmed by the city council. So the city council would have a confirmatory role for commissioners.
Okay.
And obviously, our funding flows through and is approved, so there's a variety of financial oversight.
Just to follow up, you have, you oversee how many cities as well?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five cities you work with and the county?
Well, actually, we work with all 88 on some matters. So we do run sort of winter shelter and programs like that in Long Beach, Pasadena, and Glendale. It's just the federal programs and certain other housing programs that we don't run in those three cities.
Excellent.
And the unincorporated areas.
Questions or comments from any other members?
If not, we will go to public comment on this issue and hopefully wrap up with you all once we're done with public comment. Thank you all so much for your patience in our inquiries in this regard. So public comment, folks will have one minute, and we'll ask you to line up in order that you're called. I have Ann Jobb, Don Davis, and General Jeff.
My name is Ann Jobb. I'm the president of Silmar Neighborhood Council, speaking for myself. I'm here to listen to the people who are here themselves, who are homeless, and those people who are helping them. Since I have but one minute, I'm going to move forward. The word proactive seems to be very on point. Someone to see that, with new eyes, to see what is being done in New York City, in San Francisco, in Utah, something that a committee cannot do. As president of the Silmar Neighborhood Council, I know how cumbersome it can be for anything to get done. If a director with authority to act and to make recommendations to the city council and to the mayor, it seems to me that that is a very good idea.
Thank you.
My name is Dawn Davis. I live and work and do outreach in my downtown neighborhood. I support the creation of a director position to lead an innovative, collaborative, and inclusive effort to improve the current homelessness and poverty situation. With the county working on many initiatives in response to our situation... With the county working on many initiatives in response to our situation as well, it's imperative that there be a singular point person with a proper authority and accountability who's plugged into what the state, county, city, local services, and nonprofits are doing. What needs to be reevaluated, changed, and integrated, not only remedy, not only to remedy our current situation quickly, but to also put a framework into place to prevent the situation from escalating to this level again. And most importantly, I would ask that we all not forsake the mission for the sake of the position. People's lives are at stake, and this should be guiding our decisions.
Good afternoon. General Jeff from Skid Row. Clearly, the conversation that's had, happened thus far is alarming. To defer to LASSA is a joke. LASSA hasn't done anything, they have nothing that they can point to, that they can say they've done correctly. For them to be spread wide over eighty-eight cities, this is the city of Los Angeles, we need something specific. They can't even get the homeless count correct, it's inaccurate. Home for Good is inaccurate, they have failed to meet their quotas. We're talking, you're talking about putting a bullseye on the back of someone that has the position of czar. With homelessness exploding through the roof, it is not time for someone to try, you're basically going to end someone's political career. Does this position have subpoena power? Can they call in the chief of police? Can they call in the nonprofits, such as the ones in Skid Row? Exactly, we need more structure. The, just coordinating activities with LASSA is not enough, this won't work, and City of Los Angeles needs to get away from the CES. It's just a database, just like HMIS and other solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Matt Horns there. If this position is created, I have two requests. One is referred, one concerns a job title. The word czar implies a maniacal dictator, tyrant, and I think a job title that's more, has more positive connotations is appropriate. Another request is minimize the cost to taxpayers. Perhaps this work, this job could be contracted out. There might be a local community nonprofit that could do the job very well with dedicated staff that's already accustomed to being overworked and underpaid. Thank you.
My name is Alan Sutton, and I'm here to speak about the appointment of a czar within the overall context of the state of emergency. As the Los Angeles Times recently editorialized, the, is 2015 going to be the year that Los Angeles finally finds a, gets serious about finding a problem for its housing and homeless? If by Los Angeles, the paper of record meant our elected officials, the answer looks like it would be no. Politics as usual has not worked, and by declaring a state of emergency, the city has as much as admitted so. Cruelty, ineptitude, and wishful thinking won't alleviate the lack of housing, affordable housing that is at the heart of the current crisis. Neither will the appointment of a czar, which will only increase the distribution of funds to somewhere other than helping the problem. And if the bureaucracy, if the family of the city has not figured out the problem yet, shame on them.
Thank you.
So with that said, I am against the appointment of the czar and wish you would reach out to people in the community.
Thank you, your time's up. We got you down for no on the czar. General Dogan, Ken Utsumi, and Wesley Walker.
Good morning. My name is Carl Scott. I'm with Los Angeles Community Action Network. I've been coming to this committee since it's been formed, even when you were an ad hoc committee. Every time we come here, the only thing that's been on agenda is the criminalization of the homeless people with the 5611. And you amend it, take it to council, go through the lawyers, I'm stopping it. But anyhow, what the situation here is, is now that you want to book your responsibility and get a homeless coordinator or a czar, I think that's ridiculous, because the money could be used for homeless service. And also, you have Greg Spiegel that the mayor appointed in place of the homeless czar. So you have someone in the city that could do the job that you're asking for. Take that into consideration, they also gave you other options to look at.
Early this month, I was at a meeting, two California state senators from Sacramento came down and had a special meeting on homelessness. They was talking about solutions, right? About two-and-a-half-hour meeting, a lot of good ideas and everything came from out of that meeting, right? This is about the fifth or sixth meeting that I've been here, just iterating some of the things that people hear. And ain't jack been come up out of this meeting right here, nothing but criminalization. If I was homeless, I'd be mad as hell on the streets right now, because y'all didn't did a damn thing to help people. People can't even get a damn toilet stool, a bathroom out there, or even a plastic bag to pick, to put their stuff in. And you talking about the two here for homeless folks? Y'all need to really revamp this whole damn committee, you know, because I'm just so fucking fed up.
The creation of a homeless czar is a way to control the homeless issue from the top without giving voice or ignoring the majority of the homeless people and organization grants NGOs like LA can. A czar, this commission should reject the homeless czar and be aware of the repressive and racist historical czar Nicholas in Russia. He was a dictator ruled by military might, and the whole population rose up against his repressive method. A czar is inherently repressive. We need human rights housing for the homeless, permanent housing. What is this appointment of the czar? We've been saying, we need permanent housing for the homeless.
Thank you so much.
My name's Wesley Walker, with Los Angeles Community Action Network. I want to start out by saying that this seems a little dysfunctional here today, because you don't know who's running what, you know? So, I'd like for you to kind of like check yourselves and find out what you really want to do, because it seems like to me that you're trying to find many, many ways to not help the homeless. I could think of Mr. Weezar here, how he found ways to bring back Broadway. He used community benefits to do that with, T-FAR. I'm sure that you guys have come up with ways other than bickering and figuring out ways to criminalize the poor people. This war on poor people is like the only thing in your minds. You need to wake up and to serve the people.
Thank you. Aaron Jimenez, Ruth Sarnoff, Antonio Ramirez, Michael Dennis, John Seeley, and Tom Grode.
Good afternoon. My name is Aaron Jimenez, and I'm here on behalf of the Central City Association. We support the creation of a full-time homeless coordinator, homelessness coordinator, dedicated to improving resource coordination between city departments and the Los Angeles Homeless Service Authority, as well as the business community and nonprofit organizations who provide supportive services that address a wide range of issues related to homelessness. By creating this position, we are confident that the city will be able to maximize their efforts. This is a great next step, and the city must make sure that this position is provided with the resources to have the ability to be successful in managing homelessness initiatives.
My name is Ruth Sarnoff. Sometimes I, I think that if we step back a bit and look at just our own path, whoever makes the agenda for meetings sets the tone. So I would suggest that all agendas for housing for the homeless be something that's created jointly between the people who support and have worked for homeless improvements and the people living as homeless people, be part of approving those agendas. And that the tone of a meeting that you've taken, you've talked a very long time, and to be denied two minutes is not, not real cool.
Thank you. Hello, yes, I fully agree that we do need a full-time coordinator, or a director, or a czar, if you will. I have one person in mind, I call him Doctor, his name is Jay Rosenthal, at the Venice, St. Joe's, on Venice Boulevard by Rose Street. He is not only a master in solutions, like Donald Trump, El Jefe, but he is also competent, thorough, efficient, he is thoughtful, humane, considerate, discreet, and hard-working. He knows mental health issues, housing, financial health, and transportation and medical help and assistance to medical veterans at the St. Joe's in Venice. This guy even suggested that I go into the share program before it was even brought up in here. I sort of slacked off because of my plight here, but, and coming to city council meetings. So again, Dr. Jay Rosenthal, I call him Doctor, he is clinical, he has the spitfire, he has, he's a troubleshooter, and he is wonderful.
Gentlemen, John Seeley for Americans for Democratic Action. In the absence of a czar, or for that matter, of a supreme Soviet, you five are the grand dukes of homelessness. And it's your responsibility, until there is a czar, as grand dukes, to devise a response that befits the calling of this as an emergency. An emergency has to be characterized by not only long-range planning, but by removing the aggravating factors and by developing a stop-the-bleeding improvisational plan. And as for the part two, we need to remove the overpolicing and criminalization of the homelessness. And as for the improvisational thing, it's about time, while we're waiting for a czar, that somebody do an inventory of public buildings and find some homeless space. I mean, I know from my own experience, there are spaces, for example, in Westminster Park in Venice, there are, what about all the swimming pools, which closed Labor Day...
Thank you. Thank you. ...and will not be open again.
My name is Tom Grode. I'm a Skid Row resident. In April, your report came out, homelessness in the city of Los Angeles. Said $100 million was spent with no coordinated effort. No coordinated effort means an empty space, a vacuum, nature pours a vacuum, and so that vacuum is filled by criminalizing homelessness. Your responsibility, as I see it, is to now fill that space with something solid, something healthy, something functional, perhaps even more importantly, something innovative. As for a czar, council member Weezar, at your DTLA homelessness panel, it was 50/50 voting for, voting against. Afterwards, I spoke to several people who voted against it, just because they hate the word czar.
Excellent. That concludes our public comment for this item. Members, I want to put forward a motion that will instruct the CAO and CLA to incorporate into the comprehensive homeless strategy, a governance structure that identifies a coordinator position, perhaps that's not called a czar, responsible for the implementation of the strategy at the city level. I think we're still open to where that person is housed and whether or not there's the committee that you all proposed, and this person is a leadership of that committee, or this person coordinates that committee. But we want to get options for that into the strategic plan. And then as it relates to LASSA, I think we'll continue to monitor that and see if there are further recommendations that come out of your deliberations with regard to how the city council participates in that. And then finally, before you all comment, I'd just like to thank you all for the work that you did to put this together and come up with an opinion that you knew wasn't exactly what we were asking for, but what you thought perhaps would work. Also, when you're looking at this coordinator position, we wanted to see how exactly it would relate to the LASSA board. So if it, if perhaps the leader of this could become a member of the LASSA board, that the mayor could appoint, or there's some formal arrangement between this coordinator and LASSA.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I think from what I hear, we're still open with the possibility, well, the direction we're going, from what I hear in your motion, is to support the idea of a coordinator position that would be the point person on homelessness for the city. And we're open to do a hybrid, as it was called earlier, to also have the oversight committee that will muster the resources available both to the CAO and CLA, because I think we should invest in the coordinator, but as resources are very limited, perhaps as, what are your reasonings and the recommendation for having the oversight committee was because there's available resources there, administrative resources, to support the work of the oversight committee and/or the coordinator? So that's, I think, I'm open for that, for that reason, for the hybrid, but we definitely would hope to move in a coordinator direction.
Thanks. I'm fine with that direction. For me, I like the hybrid approach a little bit, because I'm concerned about allocation of resources. I don't want to be spending money creating an infrastructure or a whole bunch of staffing unless and until we're already spending money on the housing, the interim housing, storage, public restrooms and stuff like that. It just doesn't seem right to be doing it. So either something hybrid-ish, or if there's a coordinator without that hybrid, if, at least for the first couple of years, if the staffing can be on loan from CAO and CLA or something like that.
If I could just, a little clarity in our, in our recommendations, you've addressed recommendation number one. Recommendation two was to request a LASSA report on the status of their governance. I didn't know if you were still including that in your committee's instruction, as well as the instruction for CLA, CAO, Housing Department, and LASSA to evaluate and recommend revisions to the LASSA GPA.
Yes.
I didn't know if those were either.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying. Excellent. Second?
Second.
Hearing no objection, that is the order. With that, we are adjourned for today's meeting on homelessness and poverty. Thank you.